For the roll call this evening, we have all members present with the exception of Dan White. And our student rep. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda for tonight?
I make my motion.
By Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. On the consent agenda, we have the check wire transfer to summary, the meeting minutes from the April 22nd, resignation terminations, non-renewals as follows, and the resolution for the membership into the state high school league, which is a standard annual resolution. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? By Stacy? By Chad, excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Under Laker Pride tonight, if we have any of the foreign exchange students, would they please come forward and also help with their host families also come up and join them?
And Mr. Lund, would you like to join them as well? Well, it's always exciting each year when we have foreign exchange students come and join us and we get to celebrate your year with you as it's coming to a close. So, we'd love for you to introduce yourself and your family if they're here.
I am Tok Rasmussen and I am from Denmark. My family's not present.
I'm Juliette. I'm from France and there's Anne Piper, my host mom, and my two siblings are outside wedding, but...
My name is Mikaela Jorgensen. I'm from Norway and Kim France, she's my host mom, and Kevin France.
I'm Caroline Phillipson and I'm from Denmark. And this is my host mom, Karen Knoll.
Well, it's always just a thrill for us to have you here. We're excited. We know that a lot of, several of you couldn't be here tonight because of lacrosse and other sports that they're playing. So, that's why we have several other exchange students this year. But we hope that the end of your year is really fantastic and that you've enjoyed your year in Prior Lake Savage and we'll take those memories with you as you go and come back again very soon. We have a certificate for you.
That was a point in our meeting where we have the open forum. There's 15 minutes set aside for the resident of the district to address the board. Do we have anyone? Seeing no one will move on. Matt with personal items approval of candidates for employment.
And before I request approval, I do want to make a quick note that there are a number of summer school positions that are coming on this and they did come as new positions in the packet. However, this is an existing program that we've had. We're still, we've still been transitioning from Carver Scott to fully supporting that ourselves. And so, it feels new to some of our hiring supervisors. But just want to point out that's not a new position, but it is new to us with the summer. And with that, I recommend the following employees for candidates for employment and seeking work.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for? So moved by Rich, second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Leave of absences.
And next, I present the following needs of absence and seeking work.
Do I have a motion to accept the leave of absences? By Tom?
Second.
Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Resolution for placing teachers on unrequested leave of absence.
So, I am presenting a resolution to place a teacher on unrequested leave of absence. We do have a number of teachers who are currently on unrequested leave of absence. The reason why there's one name appearing here is because this is a teacher who is affected and will see a change in, in that the allocation due to scheduling for next year. So, wanted to get that explanation out there and that make my recommendation.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the teacher placement on unrequested leave of absence?
So moved.
By Richard?
Second.
By Chad? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Actually, that is a roll call. Rich, I'm sorry, Chad?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
By Stacy?
Aye.
Aye, Lee?
Aye.
That carries six zero. The insurance committee recommendation on health and dental.
And on health and dental, premium rates. On behalf of the district's insurance committee, I am recommending that the board approve a six and a half percent increase in our health insurance premiums and a 10 percent decrease in our dental insurance premiums for the 2013 school year. And one note that I'd like to make is that we've had three years of experience now in self-funding and over that time, this is our first increase at 6.5 percent. And so, over the three years that we've been self-funded, we've seen an average of below 2.2 percent for those increases, which is an excellent result and is significantly outperforming where we would have been had we not got self-insured. So, I'm very proud of the work that the board's done, that our employee units have done to get to this point and although we'd love to see another zero there, we were really moving forward and functioning well. And we're hoping that this will allow us to, if anything, add a little bit to that reserve that we continue to build to work towards even greater stability in our health insurance premiums. And then with the dental, this is after our first year of being self-insured now. With our dental program, we did see enough savings to not only fully fund a three-month reserve in our dental premiums, we were also able to look at decreasing those premiums by 10 percent, which will be a significant savings to the district. So, that's another move where we worked in cooperation to make that move to self-funding and you know, this is really a time to celebrate that we're putting those savings in the plan's ability. You know, we're going to recognize that in the district and we're no longer paying that to a carrier and not seeing any returns there. So, good news on the insurance front. With that, I make my recommendation.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the recommendation for the health and dental insurance premiums for? Next, by Stacy? Second by Tom?
Yeah, question? Overall, you know, now that we've been self-funded for a few years, has there been any issues or is it, was it pretty smooth? Because I know that at first we weren't sure, but I haven't heard anything, so I'm assuming it's pretty smooth.
You know, it's really gone pretty darn well. It's easier than any other kind of transition between carriers because you've been so closely near the plan that you were on before moving to self-funding. So, that's really been a positive experience. There's always some hiccups when you're talking about a thousand employees and just transferring data and records, but really, it's gone very well.
I could talk to that too. I talked to Deb about it and she mentioned that there were a few instances with self-insurance where they were actually paying for things they shouldn't have. And then once we went with the identical plan, that was not covered. And so, they straightened that out. But all in all, she said it's gone very, very well. She commands Matt and his group for what they've done, so thank you.
One more question. What companies are we using for dental and medical, do you know?
For dental, we're with Delta Dental.
Minnesota?
Correct. And then we are with Preferred One, also a Minnesota company for...
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? By Stacey?
Aye.
Carries five zero one. We have no old business tonight, moving on to new business. We have a proclamation for great teachers make great public schools. Great teachers make great public schools proclamation. Whereas teachers make public schools great and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now therefore, we, the Prior Lake, I'm saying, the school board of the Prior Lake Savage area schools, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 7th, 2013 to be National Teacher Day within the Prior Lake Savage area school district. We urge that, we urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers on our lives. And it's signed by myself. And then we also have School Nutrition Employee Week. We have a proclamation for that. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day and whereas the staff of the district's school's meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthy nutritious meals to this district's children, and whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas the week of May 6th through 10th, 2013 is School Nutrition Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Prior Lake Savage area school district expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of the children. And it's signed by myself as of the 6th. We'll move on to the bid award approval for the roof replacement. Jim?
Good evening, Chair Torrance, School Board, Dr. Gruber. I have before you a results of our bid opening this afternoon for the roof at the district service center. Would like to award the, with your approval, the roof project to Swickert's Roofing out of Macado in the amount of $283,679.
Do I have a motion to accept the bid on the roof replacement?
Make a motion.
By Lee? Second by Tom? Questions?
Have we worked with this all before?
Correct. Swickert's has done some work since I've been there, about two or three projects. They're a very good company.
Do you have a question?
I have one, but I'll let you go first.
I refresh from my memory again, how does this compare to what we budgeted?
It's a little higher than what we budgeted. We did build in some insulation removal, 10 percent insulation removal as kind of insurance. We don't know how much wet insulation is on the roof. And we're basically prepaying that. If there's no insulation to be removed, then we'll get that money back 10 percent.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to comment. I like your chart here explaining that the who bid and what the bids were.
Okay.
As we talked about that before, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Further questions? For Chad mine, so. With that, all those in favor of the awarding the bid to Swickert's for the roof? Today, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero.
Thank you.
Special education child counts. I'll report, Dr. Kern.
Good evening, Chairman Torrance, Board, Dr. Gruber. As I do each spring, we wanted to submit for your review the statistics on special ed child count as of December 1st of 2012. As you will see when you peruse these documents, the statistics, there's been increases in students receiving speech and language therapy, students identified as other health disabilities, and students with developmental delays. And the students with developmental delays are youngsters from three to five years old. And we believe that's just an increase in the number of students that are identified at that age, that young in our community. The other things, the other statistics of note is that for the first time in a couple of years, we've actually had a decrease in the number of kids identified with autism spectrum disorder. It was almost a 5 percent decrease in that. And there's been a 9 percent decrease since 2009, 2010 in students identified with ASV. And as you'll see, overall, the percent of our total enrollment that are students that are considered special education is at 12.8 percent. The state average is 14 percent. And if you, what I did was also look at other districts around the area. Nine other districts, including Chaska, Stillwater, Rosemont Apple Valley, Farmington, Eden Prairie, Shakopee, Minnetaka, Burnsville, and Lakeville. And they also produce a chronology of their special ed enrollment. And in almost all of those districts in that, in those 10 districts, eight of them are within one or two percentage points of each other. So, anywhere from 12 percent of their population to 10 percent of their population. The two outliers would be Shakopee and... Shakopee and... Rosemont Apple Valley are at about 14 percent. But for those other eight districts, Prior Lake is in the same ballpark. Most of them are at 11 or 12 percent with coupled in that 10 percent. So, that's a quick overview of what our numbers look like. These numbers in front of you are for students from birth to 18, birth to 12th grade. So, wanted to submit this to you for your review and if you have any questions?
Me? Any questions?
Question, you said there's more developmental delay that went up quite a bit. I was looking back in history, back in 2003 through '06 was quite a bit higher. Is there, is that just cohort of students or children? Or is it a lack of knowledge or not enough information getting out there? Do you have any idea why it fluctuates that much?
We actually, we don't have a definitive idea why it fluctuates that much, but those are our same ideas in regards to child find, that we, child find information that we put out to the community to make sure that all kids from birth through ages five are being identified as quickly as possible. And there, as you've noted, there are some fluctuations. The state criteria changed a little bit in those years, but it actually, the criteria actually made it easier to qualify for special ed. We actually, across the state, people expected those numbers to go up and they did not. But we are pursuing all the child find obligations that were required to do by the state and so, we continue to do that to try and identify all those kids that we can.
Any further questions?
Just an observation. The percent of total student population is relatively consistent. Which is a good, for future planning, I think.
It has been for quite a few years, yeah.
I'm wondering if some of these are just reclassifications?
I might add that having been in several other districts across the metro area, this number is considered to be very low in terms of what it could be. In some districts, I've seen it as high as 16 percent. And I've never seen it too much lower than that 12.8, maybe 12 would be about the closest we hope to do. With a district our size, to have just 12.8 percent, I think, is really quite impressive. You're doing a good job of identification and of not over-identifying, is what it's telling me.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of curriculum adoption recommendations.
Good evening, Chair Torrance, Members of the Board, Dr. Gruber. You have a memo at your board table that outlines the recommendation to adopt the Northern Lights curriculum for sixth grade for the 13, 14 school year. And I'll get into that just a little bit, but I wanted to provide an overview of our social studies committee work this year. Because usually, we typically do not come to the board for approval looking at single grade levels or single titles. Usually, it's elementary or more of a secondary approach. There has been a committee meeting of K-12 representatives looking at the social studies standards and best practices associated with that and looking specifically regarding how they currently teach social studies, how social studies is delivered to students at elementary and secondary level. One of the things that has been really at the forefront, actually, a couple of things at the forefront of their study this year. One has been looking at technology and electronic resources for looking forward as far as what are the materials that are out there to teach students these concepts that they need to learn. We barely scratched the surface of that. We've had, we had our most recent meeting, we had our Apple reps come in and talk about eBooks. We also had another representative from another group come in and talk about Flexbooks, where teachers are creating the curriculum, putting it into their own resource, and then they're sharing that with students or using that with students electronically. We need more time to investigate some of those options. But probably the biggest factor that came into play this year was the Department of Education's approach at looking at the social study standards. They were very deliberate in their work of looking at the new standards because the standards have seen some big changes to it, particularly the sequencing at the middle school level, but also some broader conceptual themes at elementary and also at the high school level. That has led to a bit of a delay in the approval process as well as the rulemaking process. And so, from the committee standpoint, looking at the standards and where they're at and not being formally approved up until recently. They were also seeing that when they started, we started reaching out to vendors to look at resources that were available relative to the new standards. Many of our vendors were waiting until the standards were formally approved before they started looking and recreating curriculum materials that teachers could consider and use with kids. And so, from a committee standpoint, this did kind of slow it down a bit with the exception of sixth grade and Northern Lights curriculum through the Minnesota Historical Society. The district presently uses the second edition Minnesota history, or excuse me, Minnesota Studies, or Northern Lights curriculum, which is a 2007 copyright. This recommendation is for 300 textbooks and an equal number of eBooks. That is approximately half of our student enrollment at sixth grade. We're about 600 students. But the class moving into next year is going to be delivered in a semester, everyday semester-long format. So, the half the students will take it in the fall semester. The other half will take it in the spring semester. And so, that's why you see the 300 books there, which doesn't necessarily reflect the student enrollment part of approximately 600. The other big difference is it better reflects the Minnesota Studies standards. The Minnesota Historical Society has been working on this, on updating their curriculum this past year, even though that the state has had some uncertainty with where the standards were going to set. But the state has always been fairly confident about what Minnesota Studies would look like. And so, the Historical Society has moved forward in making sure that those materials will be ready for implementation this summer and so that districts could purchase for the following school year. The other big difference is these materials will also have, these materials will also have all of the technology components for teachers as well as the eBook online and the customizable digital resources. Our current Northern Lights curriculum does not have those electronic and customizable resources. And so, we see a good fit here. It matches our, for sure, where we're moving from a technology standpoint and bringing in more technology resources. But moving ahead for next year, we need to delve more deeply into moving away from textbooks and looking at more online content or creating our own content through Flexbooks and eBooks. So, with that, the recommendation is tonight for the Northern Lights curriculum revised second edition for implementation.
Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee for the purchase of the sixth grade social studies books? By Stacy?
I will second that motion.
Second by Rich. Questions? Discussion?
What options, what options were looked at? I guess see this, but I don't see the alternative, I should say.
Very few alternatives exist for Minnesota Studies. Several vendors were looked at from Holt McDougall, Glenn Co., Pearson. But very, most of those resources do a broad sense of Minnesota Studies. Minnesota Historical Society gets the depth that's required for kids to know about Minnesota history, government, economics, and culture.
Any other questions?
Does this need to be voted on tonight or can we postpone it until next so I can take a look at what this actually is? Because I'm not familiar with the Northern Lights curriculum, I should say. Sorry.
I think the curriculum committee, we reviewed it this afternoon and all members were in favor of it. And expanding it, it's mainly because it's sponsored by the Minnesota Historical Society. Sixth grade education is based on the history of Minnesota. There's no other better expert I know than the Minnesota Historical Society on the history of Minnesota. And the fact that it comes with both the hard textbook and with the ability to use technology in the, for the eBooks.
If I could add to that, Mr. Wolf?
Go ahead.
The other thing that we had talked about too is we're already using Northern Lights second edition, which is several years old. And so, this is a curriculum we're very familiar with. And so, it does, it does bring in additional resources to meet the new standards in addition to that technology. So, this is not a brand-new or I guess not a tested curriculum in the district. So, it's a very, it's a good match.
Yes, I learned something new during the committee that it's a revised second edition, meaning there's minor changes to it. If it was a total change, it'd be a third edition. So, it's a revised second edition and mainly incorporating those electronic and technology assets.
And that is something that we will look at moving forward. They have, they anticipate that there will be an iPad app coming out in subsequent years that districts would have access to for this curriculum too. And that was another appealing aspect to that moving forward.
So, when they get the iPad app, you can automatically, you can use that or?
Correct.
Purchase it or whatever?
Yeah. Or an iPhone.
As I recall, there aren't a lot of options for Minnesota history. What, how many different, was there any other option for you as far as a robust Minnesota history?
Not to the level of the Northern Lights. I mean, that, that is generally, when you're talking about industry standards, that's typically what we're finding with the Northern Lights. that's, that's typically what we're finding with the Northern Lights. The other vendors just do not get to the level of depth or specificity, or really the, I guess, breadth of what, of what the Historical Society provides.
I, too, had questions, and spoke with one of the teachers today, and they said there's no curriculum rewrite with this, it's just a book, and they've updated, changed a few things, but it's very minor. Comfortable with it, so there's no, it's just getting the, the e-material, and I know my kids now, the books stay at school, and you come home and look at your textbooks online, so.
It's just revising history is always one thing that really worries me.
Lee, anything?
Well, as a member of the Minnesota Historical Society, they're not in the business of revising history. They're in the business of documenting history.
Do we have a motion?
Yep. Yeah, we have a motion, and second.
I guess I'm not hesitant with this, because if this has gone through the curriculum committee, and we've used this company before, I'm, could be in support of it. I understand some of your concerns, Chad, but I'll, I'll refer to the committee that studied it more than I did, so.
I have a second, motion is second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That carries 5-1.
Thank you.
Moving on to the issues of the 2013-14 purchase order requests. Matt? You said, you said you were filling in for Julie tonight, so.
I, in spirit, yes.
Okay.
In any other way that might matter, no.
Okay. Julie noted.
That was well done.
I know we need board approval for the purchase orders issuance of the 2013-14 order for supplies that are needed prior to the preliminary budget approval. And I know Julie's not here tonight. I believe this is a formality.
It is.
To set the initial purchase orders to start the process for next year's school, so.
We have secretaries that leave partway through the summer, so they start the purchase order process at this time, and they don't place them until July 1st, but this allows them to begin that, that annual process.
If I could ask a question?
Sure.
And it's just basically for supplies, paper, pens, pencils, things.
Routine.
Yes. Do I have a motion to accept the approval of the issue?
Hello?
By Stacy? Seconded by Tom. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Anything from the panel committee tonight? I didn't see anything. Okay. Administrative reports with Dr. Gruber?
Yes. It's that time of year, again, where we begin our celebration of the good learning that's happening across our district, in all of our schools, in all of our settings, early childhood through 12th grade. As you saw tonight with our foreign exchange students coming that have been here with us for this past year, and will be taking home memories, that's the kind of experience that all of our students have as they go through our school year. And our annual report was just mailed to homes last week, and if you haven't seen it, it is available at the district office or at any of our school buildings, as well as it'll be available at the public library. And it certainly tells the story of what's happening in our schools that we're very proud to report to our community and to our families. So that is there, and I think the school board members have all received that. Whether it's Super Saturday Spotlight, which happened last Saturday, a cooperative between the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce and Community Education, that was just excellent and a new adventure that they, they have taken together to offer an event for families to discover what's going on in our community during the summer. From that to this evening of visiting the K-5 Art Festival at Westwood, that all the schools combined, the art teachers bring all of their work, the rest of the rest to this art fair, and families and students were busy looking at all the different pop art culture that they had put together over the last year. Those are just examples of how we get ready for this next change of seasons as we go into summer, quickly from winter, unfortunately, but we are getting there. We have music concerts, we have a choir concert going on, band concerts going on, we have events every single night, and now that the fields are even open, we have sporting activities happening. And as I drove by Twin Oaks, I counted four different sporting activities going on in that one area. So every space is valued at this point in time because of the very hard spring we've had. So there's good news across our district. As we get ready for summer, Dan Patch Days are coming up, June 20th through 23rd, and I know our school board has often been a part of that, as well as Lakefront Days, which are August 8th through 10th. So if any of you would like to participate in either one of those, Kristy Muslin will be making those commitments with you, so you just need to get ahold of her. And then Summer Smash is August 24th, and our tickets are on sale now. Our headline, headline act includes the former members of ELO and ELO Part II. They've now regrouped to form the orchestra, and they'll be the performing act for the Summer Smash this year. And again, it'll be at the Epic Event Center in downtown Minneapolis, and all proceeds will go to the Laker Educational Foundation. So we have many volunteers across our district working very hard to make this bigger and better than last year, and last year it was really quite a night. And I hope you can all save that and be with us for that celebration. Tickets are $60, and there's a special price of $40 that's been extended for all staff so that they might be able to attend the event as well. And of course, we have the Lakefront Music Fest on July 19th through 20th with Montgomery Gentry and Brett Michaels. Again, this, this event is sponsored by the Prior Lake Rotary, one of our partners, but they are also, have named LABC and our PAA as their nonprofit partners again for the second year in a row. So you're able to purchase tickets right online, right through our district website, if you would like to attend, and that way you can ensure that the PAA and or LABC will receive the proceeds from the ticket sales. And you can also sign up to volunteer right on our website. So lots of opportunities for you this summer, it's going to come very quickly, and we'd love to have you be a part of any of those that you can. Prior Lake High School made Newsweek's list again as one of America's best high schools in the nation. Newsweek bases ranking on public schools that have proven to be the most effective in turning out college-ready grads. The list is based on graduation rate, college acceptance, the percent of students enrolled in at least one AP course, as well as AP test scores and average ACT scores. Prior Lake High School ranks number 23 in the state based on these criteria. So congratulations to Mr. Lund and his staff, and all the students at Prior Lake High School. As we reported last time, Jeffers Pond Elementary has been named a national rain school, and our district has earned the sustainability award, and plans are underway for a representative group to go to Washington DC on June 3rd to participate in that event of receiving that award. We'll also be meeting with legislators as they are available, we're putting those things together at this time. So the next few weeks are busy. If you want to see all of the good things going on in our schools, just check out our website, because you will find something going on absolutely every night. And there are great celebrations of the good work that's been going on all year, so. With that?
Thank you. Other administrative reports? Jeff?
I just wanted to bring an update to the board regarding the immersion topic and the study moving forward. I have reached out to the Karla Institute at the University of Minnesota, University of Minnesota Center of Language, Research and Language Acquisition, to develop a partnership to work with them as we, as a district, move forward in studying world language or world language education options at the elementary level. As a result, I will be bringing a committee roster and revised charge statement and timeline to the June 3rd board meeting to present to you and seek approval to move forward with the study. Just wanted to give you that update.
Matt, anything for you, Julie? No? Okay. Thank you. Board reports?
We had a district curriculum advisory committee meeting besides the 6th grade curriculum and the immersion status update that Jeff brought. We also had a status review on ESTEM, where we're at in that process and the five-year plan, and the consensus there is I think we'll be able to implement a little bit quicker than the five years planned for, and we're all really, because we have great synergy right now with our environmental ed. And the fourth item was the assessment grading and reporting committee with an elementary focus gave us a status about how the best practices research they're doing, and they're going to listen to speakers, and they've got a broad committee of administrators, principals, and teachers from several different areas. So they're moving forward on, in that area, too. Did I get it all, Jeff?
You did.
Anyone else?
Do we want to mention the one-on-one initiative? Lee?
I wouldn't know where to start. It was fascinating and overwhelming.
Lee, I, and Todd went to a one-on-one, present with Sue Ann and, and Mr. Lund and Marcus were there, presented by Apple, on a one-on-one initiative with handheld technology, so. I got lots of questions, more questions, I came out with more questions than I had going in. The impression I got is we got catching up to do in this district, so.
Yeah, I think we're, we're on the right step with the first data warehouse, the infrastructure, but a lot more questions.
It did help to reinforce what we are doing, though. It's a good one.
Yeah. Any other committee? Moving on, future events, we have a district retirement celebration, May 15th, 3:30 to 5:30 at the Twin Oaks Middle School. We have the board study session on May 20th, 6 o'clock, at the District Service Center, and the regular board meeting on June 3rd. I'll be absent with the delegation out to Washington, so Vice Chair will be presenting. With that, is there anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? By Tom? Seconded by Stacy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Thank you. Good night.